Hello? No, it's okay. Okay, we're ready there. Good morning, everyone. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. City Secretary Rebecca Huerta, would you please call Rome?
Mayor Paulette Juarez.
Present.
Council members Roland Barretta.
Here.
Gil Hernandez.
Here.
Michael Hunter.
Here.
Billy Lerma.
Here.
John Martinez.
Here.
Ben Molina.
Present.
Mike Pusley should be here shortly. Greg Smith.
Here.
City Manager Peter Zanoni.
Present.
City Attorney Miles Risley.
Here.
Mayor and Council, a quorum of the council and the required charter officers are present to conduct the meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Huerta. So we'll go ahead and move on to public comment. Item C. Before we begin, I'll ask City Attorney Miles Risley to please review the council meeting rules of decorum. And the rules will also be visible on the screens.
Citizens are authorized and encouraged to present their views to the council on city-related matters. However, such should be done in a factual, precise presentation, and questions of council or staff are inappropriate. Loud, boisterous, profane, or obscene language or behavior is not allowed.
Thank you, Mr. Risley. So I'll be calling people in order in which they signed up. In-person public comments will be taken first, followed by virtual public comment. Corpus Christi residents will be allowed three minutes to -- or be allowed to speak before non-residents. And for those commenting in person, I'd like to remind everyone that a recording is being made of the meeting. Please speak into the microphone at the podium and state your name and address. Citizen comments are limited to three minutes. Non-resident comments are limited to one minute. For those commenting in person, there's a timer underneath the base of the microphone. It will let you know exactly how much time you've left to speak. And once your time is up, a buzzer will go off, at which time we appreciate you wrapping up your comments. If you have anything, a petition or any information pertaining to your subject, please present it to the city secretary before speaking. So with that, we will start with Kiri Meyer.
Okay. Ms. Meyer's not -- she just sent a message that she's not going to be able to speak today, and she's not here either, so.
Okay, no problem. Next would be, thank you, Tim Dowling.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Tim Dowling, 8017 Via Franche. I gave a two-page handout to the ladies here at the left. I hope you all have received a copy now. I also sent a detailed email to you yesterday, and this is just kind of a summary of that email. But basically, it tells you there's four steps in redistricting, the one person, one vote. Two and three are Hispanic minority-protected districts. I hope you get some legal advice about whether one and five are, they may be. And then the third step, after you figure out you've complied with the statutory and constitutional law, you do your prudential changes. That's things like what Mr. Hernandez mentioned about not splitting precincts, following major streets, compactness, not splitting communities, neighborhoods. And after you've made those prudential changes, you say, "Okay, are we still okay with the statutory and constitutional stuff?" If you're not, you've got to rework it. There's a lot of vagueness in the current schedule. We get -- it's good that we have a schedule, but we need to tighten it up. I think it would be great if we had at least four meaningfully different maps before we began the meeting. You're going to be getting public comment. So after you get a couple of public comments, if they tell you something important, make a new map. And then Councilman Barretta was exactly correct that you're meeting on the eighth. You do need a workshop after you get the public comment, so that you can figure out what to do. The website is very good, but it needs some major improvements. The census map on there that was put from the law firm is virtually useless. It basically doesn't tell you anything at all about the precincts. Doesn't tell you anything at all about ethnicity. Doesn't tell you population by precinct. You could figure it out if you add up a whole bunch of census blocks, but you ought to make it easy. The sign-up, I don't understand at all. If I was sitting there yesterday in the afternoon, if I wanted to sign up for tomorrow, you can't. You've got too tight a window. It's not clear whether you're going to allow walk-in speakers, are you, aren't you? I can't tell. As far as the process, it's very important that you all communicate in the open, especially since you're going to have people with conflicts of interest making decisions. So that should be on the record at public meetings or in emails that are sent. They should be posted on the website. But you should use the option that you apparently not told about by your lawyer, and that is to use an independent redistricting commission as Mr. Bickerstaff recommended. And I think a strong case could be made that the sale member -- members have a conflict of interest under the ethics code if they vote. So all of our reason for an independent redistricting commission. You have the time to do it right. And I ran into Mr. Caputo this morning, and I said, "Why wasn't an IRC presented to the council as an option?" I have nothing to say about that. That should have been the first thing decided, who's going to be the decision-maker. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dowling. James Hernandez? James Hernandez? Okay, he is not present. Tom Taglibou?
He's a WebEx, but I don't think he's online.
Not present?
No.
Online?
No.
Okay. And Alisa Gonzalez on WebEx as well?
Okay, she is online. Just one moment.
Okay.
There she is.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay. Mayor Juarez, city council members, my name is Alisa Gonzalez, 4101 Brett Street, District Three. Thank you for inviting public comment for today's workshop. I look forward to learning more about the redistricting efforts of this council. For right now, I would like to express my ongoing concern about aspects of the redistricting as I see it. While you have been exemplary in implementing more transparency, more public input, a website that is on its way to being more interactive, I was disappointed to see that the only way I can participate in my district's town hall is in person. Coronavirus is still very much with us, and I was exposed this weekend when helping an elderly friend. Virtual testimony will still be the way I can best protect myself and others at this point. I urge you to use it as regularly as possible for meetings of any kind. Also, my renewed focus is on encouraging you to take steps to address the weaknesses in the census process and data itself by creating flexibility in the drawing of maps for this city. Sure, this is limited by legal aspects, but I learned in the legislative redistricting that there was a case, Lulak versus Perry, that states, quote, "Neither the Constitution nor Congress has stated any explicit prohibition of mid-decade redistricting to change districts drawn earlier in conformance with the decennial census." While that had to do with the legislative redistricting, my point is that 10 years is too long for drawn maps. The demographics for our city and state are changing drastically, and the census data was marred by a rushed process and COVID. There has to be a more flexible approach for redistricting, one that will ensure that voters can vote for someone who understands their issues and can respond accordingly. To that end, I strongly urge the council to start forming an independent redistricting commission as a way for ongoing attention to how districting is affecting Corpus Christi citizens. Also, as you pull voters from one district to another district to even out populations, I strongly urge you to take as serious consideration the issues in the areas affected by the redistricting and ensure that the issues within a district are similar enough to be adequately addressed by the district's council member. Thank you for listening to my comment.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez.
Okay. Mayor, that concludes the public comment period.
Okay. I'll go ahead and close public comment now, and we'll move on to our presentation and discussion of the 2022 redistricting illustrative plan for city council districts and development of a baseline city council districts map for community engagement purposes.
Mayor and Council, I'd like to introduce again, this is our general counsel, Kabi Caputo with Bickerstaff, and he is serving as our redistricting counsel, and he'll guide us through this process today.
Good morning, mayor and council, city manager. Welcome to the one-every-10-year process that can be very difficult. It also can flow pretty easily depending on the data and what it shows and issues within your community. So just to recap, we're here because, as of the census, your single-member districts are out of balance with the constitutional standard of no more than a 10% top-to-bottom deviation. You're at a 37.06% deviation, so we have to basically move total population figures around within your system to get those back into balance. The council has adopted a resolution that lays out various criteria to assist us in doing that, that we will follow as we go along. And the focal points of those, as I understand it from the council meeting and working with your staff, use election precincts more so than the blocked level data, which the census gives us, to try to eventually get to where we have communities of interest moved around together. And ultimately, that's what we need you all to do. You know, I'm a lawyer in Austin. I don't know, you know, what's going on in the communities in Corpus Christi, and that's where the council has specific expertise, because you are the representatives of the people, and you know those things, and you can best direct us on making those changes. And that's what we're going to do today. What we have brought with us today is a preliminary map or an illustrative map, and hopefully joining us over the line is Cameron Arseneau, one of the GIS technicians at my office. He will be able to put up the map with the illustrative plan that we've developed, and that is strictly just a baseline. You could adopt it. It meets all the standards, in our opinion, but it isn't uniquely tailored to Corpus Christi, and that's what we need to do, is to have you all talk us through some of the issues. We can move blocks around in live, real-time. Right now, the data, demographic data, will change in real-time. And so, you know, if one of you says, "Move this block over here, move this block over here," we can do that, throws us out of balance. We can then talk about how to get back into balance. Everyone can see the numbers as they move, and it's, as I said, it's kind of a free-flowing process. To ultimately get us to a map that the council is comfortable with to present to the community to say, "Give us feedback on this." And then we'll do the community input sessions. As the community presents feedback, both in those sessions and over the, I think we have an email box set up to receive comments, so people can send in their comments that way. We come back to the council, and we discuss, "Here's what the community was saying about this." And we can, again, engage in a drawing session like this to move the lines around based on the community input, if the council thinks it's the right thing to do. Because ultimately, under your charter and under law, the council has to adopt the election system. So ultimately, you all have to be content with the system as well and vote to put it into place. So we have a timetable to do that. And at this point, I guess, I'll just have Cameron put the map up. I can answer any questions you have while he's doing that. And we can kind of walk through -- and again, this is just an illustrative plan to bring you back into balance. You may say, "That's the worst thing ever. Start over." And we can wipe it out and start over completely. We are trying to work off your existing district boundaries. That's one of the criteria that was adopted. So we don't want to necessarily just completely redo everything. But I'll kind of walk through from north to south. So up in the kind of northeast side, there's a block that had been in two. It's down, actually, I just drove by it. It's down at Morgan and Staples. And it's a little block with about 1,000 people living in it. And so we moved that back into one to try to draw a more clear line there. I think it's along Coleman Avenue. And then kind of going out to the west, what we did was we, because there's so much more population in the south, the majority of your growth has been in districts five and four, five in particular, because it's, you know, 10,000, 15,000, almost 20,000 people too big, or 14,000 people too big. We have to move everything south. So what we did here was, we had District One come down south on the west side and pick up those areas out around the airport. And doing that balanced District One. It needed to gain about, sorry, I have to use my glasses, age. It needed to gain about 5,500 people, and it gains that in a little bit through these changes. Then going further south into the interface between five and two and three, we had two come over into three a little bit, and then we had District Three go down into five. And then we also had two go over into four a little bit. Surprisingly, just those few moves, you know, it's a total of maybe 15 or 18 election precincts that moved, that brought you back into balance. And it keeps the election, the voting age population figure is very similar to the current plan, so that there's not any kind of retrogression in minority voting capability or opportunity. And so it does what is required. Now, is it the right plan in Corpus Christi? Are there other districts we need to move around? I've worked with some cities that have, similar to you, very fast-growing areas and then areas that are not growing. And what they've done sometimes is to gross up the population in the lower, the slower-growing areas, so that over the course of the decade, those areas don't get out of balance. And correspondingly, they put slightly less population into the fast-growing areas, so they have kind of room to grow into. So over the course of the decade, there'll be less, nobody can control growth, but it's, there's at least an opportunity for there to be less imbalance when you get around to this again in the next 10 years. So that's certainly something we can do. In this plan, for instance, the way it's lined up, District Five has lost over 16,000 people. So it's actually underpopulated by a little bit, couple thousand underpopulated. We did not necessarily do that with District Four in this plan, but you all know your growth patterns. Actually, cities are the best people to know these things. You know, we work with counties and school districts and colleges, and you all know exactly where the growth is coming in your community, because you're doing the Platts, you're doing the subdivisions and the preliminary plans and whatnot. So you are the best suited to say, "Hey, this area is blowing up, and it's going to continue blowing up for the near future. You know, we can change to maybe underpopulate that area within the deviation." And this plan has a deviation. You can see on the, if you're looking at the map, up in the upper right-hand corner in blue, there's the deviation. It's 9.77. So we're pretty close to the 10. That gives you a lot of room to maneuver. Because four is too big still, and because five is smaller, that's where the deviation is. So there's a lot of room to play within districts one, two, and three, taking out of four, and, you know, maybe moving lines around between four and five. But that's up to you all to tell us at this stage. I'm just saying, these are, these are areas that are possible, given the way the illustrative plan turned out. And with that, we are happy to, oh, one other thing I want to say is, as we go into this, there are, some of your election precincts are a little oddly shaped. You'll click on what should be what looks like a coherent area, and all of a sudden, there's a long tail going off into some other part of town. We can't do anything about that. You have the same problem with census blocks. There's always weirdly shaped census blocks. And you think, "Oh, we can just move this block," and you click on it, and it turns out that it has fingers and tendrils going all over the place. I don't really know how the census does that. I don't really understand how that process works out. But that is a reality. So you may see that as you suggest things to move. We may go click on the block, and it sort of gets very odd. As an example, Cameron, can you click on Election Precinct 114 over on the west side of District Three? This is my example for y'all. So when he clicks on it, you see it highlights in yellow, and it should be, you know, a very compact block, except it has a tail that shoots off. So we can move around that, but you'll just see some, things like that happen as we go. And with that, it's really an opportunity for y'all to ask questions, to make suggestions. As I said, we can do things in real-time. You all seem to know your election precincts really well, so this map is set up with election precincts as the primary blocks.
Okay. Well, we'll start with the questions. So, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes, thank you. In discussions with Councilman Smith, we've decided, we've asked, we're going to be asking to change 126 and 17 from four to five, kind of flip-flop, because the numbers in 126, and I'm, and unfortunately, we didn't get the numbers from you for, to do, so we can verify the numbers. So I had to go and look at counting up the blocks.
Yeah, the census block data, yeah. We can fix that on the next iteration of the map.
Okay. So I counted it up, and Precinct 126 has 7,000, and this is just my math. I don't have verification on this, but according to what I added up was 7,016. And Precinct 17 had 5,810, just based on adding up the numbers. And so they were very clean. They didn't have the blocks going over into other districts, because they had the arterials being the dividing.
Right.
So in changing those, it's a 1,200, just a little, slightly over 1,200 in difference, and that would actually balance districts four and five just a little bit more. Plus, 126 is in the Veterans Memorial School area, and by giving it to District Four, it would be the only voting precinct that would be in Veteran, that would cover Veterans Memorial for District Four. So trying to keep communities of interest, 126, keeping them with 125, 128, 26, and 67 would keep them within the Veterans Memorial area, which I think would be appropriate. And 17 is in the King School District, which is also within District Four. So if you could show those numbers by swapping those out, 126 and 17 between four and five.
And Cameron's doing that.
So you can see where it just reduces it just a little bit for District Four, and it increases it just slightly for District Five, and still keeps your relatively good balance there. And it would keep communities of interest, specifically with the high school that the, that community attends.
Okay.
On both, on both sides.
All right.
Also, to your point, and this is a discussion that a few of council members have had, all the districts, except for District Two, are, have growth areas. District One has a Cal Allen area. District Three has the London area. District Four has the Island, as well as a portion of the Oso Parkway Preserve area, which I believe is precinct number eight. And then District Five also has some areas of growth, but District Two does not. And to your point, District Two would probably be the one that should be the largest coming out of, out of this redistricting, because it doesn't have a growth area, and it is completely surrounded by the other areas. So you had mentioned this earlier about trying to have some durability in the redistricting.
Correct.
That would, that would probably provide the most ability to do that. I would have done some pre-work, but I didn't have the numbers.
Yeah.
So if, I don't know if you have some recommendations there that you could provide for that?
It's possible to move two along the shoreline further south, I think. Cameron, why don't you?
Well, I looked at Precinct 65. Maybe that was too large, but maybe you could look at some other ones.
Well, let's do the move here and see what the numbers look like. Because two is almost in a perfectly balanced district in terms of the ideal size. So that does make two a little too big, so two would have to give up something, I guess.
Well, you moved 65 and 92.
Which one would you suggest, taking 65 out and just moving 92, or the other way around?
I think, well, it, because of the shape, it makes it, makes it a little odd. Not quite contiguous, but that, that number, I was talking to Councilman Molina earlier, and we said about 5,000 over the size would probably make it durable to last throughout the 10 years. So 92 would probably be the best one to do. Now, that's, that's my suggestion.
Go the other way, then, Cameron. Take 65 out of two and put 92 in. May not be the most aesthetically pleasing map.
But it does make
Yeah.
District Two the largest one coming out of redistricting, which I think would be the most appropriate thing.
Right.
Just for durability, so we don't have the large swings like we did in this last redistricting, where we had, what, a 30, what, 34% difference?
37% deviation, yeah.
37% difference. But those are my comments.
Cam?
Thank you.
Councilman Smith?
Thank you. Last Friday, I asked our planning department if they could give us information on expected growth with it. I think that's real important as we're going forward. It said, "We don't be looking for today, but we need to be looking at least where we have visibility a couple of years." You know, how many lots are coming in here? Now, we've got some conflicts in what we're asking. First, I want to ask the question about the minority-opportunity districts that public comment asked about. So are District One and Five now qualify for that as presented?
They are not substantially different than they currently are, and that's about all I can really say in an open session.
Okay.
There are legal issues involved here. There's a case pending before the U.S. Supreme Court that says you're not even supposed to be considering race right now.
Okay.
So if that case comes down and says you can't consider it, we should not be considering it.
Okay.
Right now, we can consider it as one of many factors. It is not supposed to be the principal factor, and as we said in the initial presentation, you have to apply it using the least restrictive means. So that means it's not the focal point of what we're doing.
Well, thank you for explaining that in public session
Sure.
on there, because I think it's very important that we all need to be as open as possible on this. You know, in the criteria we gave you, we have some inherent conflicts in there. We're asking for community of interest, and we're asking for precincts, and we're asking for this other information. From my standpoint, precincts are not granular enough. You just exhibited, you did 65 in there. It looks like it's gerrymandered district, because we're trying to stay within precincts. I think, if possible, again, my opinion, we should stay within precincts, but there's cases like 65. If you cut 65 in half on the map you just showed, it becomes more practical on there. Another one is 92. If you can bring 92 up there? Boy, you're going to make me dizzy on this one.
Yeah, I know.
I have a little bit of junk with my mouse right now.
Okay. So you take a look at 92. We talked about divisions on it with it. So we have Airline Road, which is a major thoroughfare. It's an arterial on there, and 92 bisects that. And with the map as drawn on there, it makes a lot of sense for the west side of 92, using Airline as your boundary, to be in two, and then the east side in four, and it helps some of that shift. And I'm using this just to show, if we just stay with precincts on there, it just handcuffs us to a more arbitrary boundaries than some of the other things that we're asking for, community interest, schools, and that. And then one last, as we're going through this process, and I look, and thank you for your introduction. This is just the start. I think we need some alternate maps there, absolutely, but I would like to see the information on the future growth that we bash planning. It would be helpful. Another thing, our area development plans. We've got, I think, eight area development plans. Where do they line up on the map? Because that illustrates communities of interest. And then Councilman Hernandez brought up school districts, to know where the school district boundaries are. All of these for this council, the public, for everybody would be very helpful in getting to our final goal on there. And I really appreciate your comments where the growth district should have a, it's helpful to have a smaller population than the districts with less growth on there. And I think our goal should be where we're than the districts with less growth on there. And I think our goal should be where we're legally bound to stay within a 10% range. I would much rather see us have a lower range than that. So you came at at 9.77.
Right.
I mean, we're right on the edge. We're probably, if we did a census today, we'd be outside that 977. So if we had a smaller range coming into that, or at, at least where reflecting growth or no growth on it. So, okay. Well, thank you very much.
So, a couple of comments. I think Cameron's trying to put up the school district boundaries. So we can, that can be a layer that we overlay if, if that becomes a, a relevant driver of redistricting.
I should say, this isn't the school district boundaries. This is the area development plan that Councilman mentioned.
Oh, okay. You can put the school districts on too if you wanted to, right, Cameron?
That is correct, yes.
You did point out one of the, the very odd election precinct, 92. I'm not sure what happened with that. And so I would, I guess, not to argue with council, but I, I don't want to leave this on the record. I don't think using election precincts is an arbitrary standard. The election precincts exist. They are geopolitical boundaries that are drawn by another entity. So it is not arbitrary to use them. It doesn't mean you have to use them exclusively or you have to only use them. But it isn't an arbitrary decision to use election precincts.
Okay, but, and, and in that vein, there, there's a lot more partisan politics, I think, when you're drawing those boundaries where we're a nonpartisan on there. We don't recognize parties with, where those are, the organizations that draw that is more in the, the partisanship side.
Yeah, I, I don't know enough about your county's drawing habits on their election precincts.
They change with whoever's in part, in power. So, yeah. And we, we are nonpartisan, so we're relying.
Yes, no, that's certainly true.
On a partisan process for doing it, so.
One of the joys of working at the local government level is it is nonpartisan.
And that, that's one of the good things about working here. We are nonpartisan.
It is a joy. Councilman Pusley?
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor. While you're not, you commented you're not utilizing the voting precincts. I, I for one would like to know which voting precincts got, are impacted by your maps. And at least, I don't think I did. I, I didn't receive any information about that. And I, I want to register again my disappointment. I, I would have hoped that we would have had an opportunity as council members to sort of meet one-on-one, to understand the process and to give you input and insight into what we know about our areas and the different areas of Corpus Christi. And we didn't have that opportunity. But be that as it may, I would like to see a spreadsheet that shows what voting precincts were impacted by the changes in these maps.
Cameron, do you have, do you have the ability to identify any voting precincts we split? I wasn't aware that we did, but.
I don't with the, yeah, with the plan that we come up with, we didn't split out. We actually like fixed some that were split initially, like up here, 31 and 41. See, I believe with the plan that we have now, there are no precincts that are split.
We can double check that, but that's, that is something we try to avoid.
Looks like this 127 might have been split a little bit, but I don't think that split affected any population. I don't think there's any population in this part down here.
Yeah.
And I think with District One, you know, you have some challenges there with, with how you come up with population because it has been one of the slower growing areas in our city, no doubt. But I think with this extension, we have to be very careful that we're not changing the areas of interest for District One with, you know, it's historically been an area that represents the west and northwest part of Corpus Christi. And some of these precincts, you're dipping down into the far south side of Corpus Christi. And so again, I think the comment about school districts and those sort of things are also going to be important for District One. That's all the comments I'm going to have right now.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Zanoni?
Thank you, Mayor. Does the, does the map go into Clayburn County? I thought we had some territory in Clayburn County, the city. Don't we have some coastline territory, Councilman?
Yes, we do. We have two voters over there, I believe.
Cameron, can you put up the county lines?
And one in San Pat.
Right. In the middle of a farm.
I don't see, I can't really see it on the map there.
I don't know if I have a county layer, but I think it's just this area down here.
That area?
Yes.
Is it highlighted in your base map, like the draft Plan A? It, it doesn't really look like it. The Clayburn County line is.
I don't think we have the county lines on there.
On this map, you do.
Oh, that one's.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't see it on this one.
So is it on this one or is it not?
It doesn't look like it's on. The Clayburn County line is on there, but I don't see that, any city territory on it.
Oh, this one, this spot down here?
Right.
Yeah.
Mr. Zanoni, are you talking about the areas south of Bob Hope here?
Go further south there, Cameron.
We, right, I think so, Councilman. Councilman Smith and I went down there a couple of years ago. He, he pointed out to me that.
I know the county took that area in, but I don't remember it ever being annexed. But that could have happened. I don't remember that.
No.
We're using the, the shape files of the city limits from, from city staff, so.
Do we, Councilman Smith, do we have territory down there, do you think?
Yes, we have the territory. And if you look, it is within this, I, I can see the county lines on there.
Right, on that base Plan A, the draft.
We've, we've got those two voters.
What is that?
It may be one.
Are you looking at the district form map, Councilman?
I'm listening to Draft Plan A.
The first one.
First one.
Okay, one of the, the one map I had didn't really.
Yeah.
Kind of hard to see it.
Yeah, it, it's difficult to see, but we did.
Okay, but it, so it's in there?
Yeah.
Maybe on that District Four one. Is that it then?
Is that the election precinct four?
Yeah, if you look at the precinct map.
Cameron?
Yeah, it's, so.
It's not included in precinct 40.
Well, it shouldn't be because if it's in another county, it would be in some Cleaver County election precinct.
It's a different precinct.
That's correct.
I guess when you compare this map here, the detailed precinct map, you know, to that first one, that track doesn't show up.
Which is part of four.
Maybe it is.
Well, I guess we will check on that.
Yeah, just double check it. It's.
It's two voters, you say?
Edge listed as having a population of one.
Say that again, Cameron?
I'm saying, right, on Edge, it's saying, it's saying that the area has a population of one.
Well, but that's, is that using the PL 194 data or is that using the election precinct data?
I think that's using the, yeah, that's just whatever the baseline election data that Edge has.
Okay. Were there any other comments?
I don't see any. You have anything here?
Just one other comment. I don't know if it's an appropriate time now, but as we go out to the community, to the five district meetings, we want to make sure we're using the maps that you all agree to use. So somehow we just, when we leave this meeting today, we want to make sure.
Right.
The staff has a clear understanding about what are the maps we're going to show because they'll be consistently showed in five meetings with the community. We don't want to deviate from, right?
And how close are we to that process?
Yeah.
Well, it starts, is it tomorrow night?
Tomorrow night is a community.
Tomorrow night's the first community meeting.
Okay, so.
Are we even ready for that?
Right.
Right.
So at this point, we've got input.
Right.
And so you would go back and.
We can generate new maps based on this plan. And that'll be what's presented tomorrow and the data from those maps.
Yes, with the, with Plan A, which is what's being presented today.
Well, but as revised, so we would either call it Plan A revised or maybe call it Plan B.
Correct. That's right.
So you can send us Plan A revised.
Today.
Today.
Yeah.
And then that's what we would use for the sessions.
Okay. And any questions or comments are obviously welcome.
And this council won't have an opportunity to discuss those changes.
We're discussing them now?
Well, I don't think so. I haven't heard that.
You're, you're wanting to see the input from today presented. He's, right.
I think we, but we, this council should have, and I don't care, I'm at large. We can do whatever we want to. So, but I just think this council needs to have a clear understanding of what it is or isn't going to support when we go out in the community.
The map that was, literally the changes we just made will become a new map. We can look at it right now. And if you have more input, you know, I'm here all day, so.
Well, also, if you, if you can, I, I hear what you're saying, but maybe if you can tell us when that is available. And then would you be open to, you know, if we want to sit down and go over that?
I will sit down with whoever you tell me to sit down with. I thought it was the council's desire that we do all this communication in public.
Absolutely.
So that's what we're doing. But I'm happy to meet with anybody at any time. I just want the council to say it's okay to meet with them.
Yeah. So I think it's critical that we are having, and this is exactly what we wanted. However, per the councilman, I think it would be very useful, like you said, if you're here today, you make these changes, you send us an email that says, here's all the, here are the changes we're going to make based on your recommendations. And we can give, you know, if council members want to sit down with him and go over those changes, they're already publicly being talked about. We can sit down with him, you know, one at a time if they want to, if you have a question on it. Would that be, would we be amenable to that?
If, if that's what you'd like.
Well, council members, I mean, it's up to you all.
I thought we were doing.
If you have a question after the map is sent, to say, you know what, I want to sit down with him and go over this part, you could do that. Not everybody might want to do that, but some might.
But those tra, those meetings, those meetings wouldn't have any changes to the map, right?
No, no, no.
It would just be a discussion on what, what you all agreed to today at this meeting? Right?
Right.
Yeah.
Right. Would that be, would, would, are you guys all?
Does anybody else have any input?
Councilman?
Well, I, I, right now, you know, the, the changes are moving pretty quickly. And I'd, I'd like to see the changes in the demographics. I, it's very hard for me, you know, I have two pairs of glasses here, by the way, just as an example, you know. And so it, it's very difficult. As Councilman Smith said earlier, we're getting dizzy. And I, I'd like to see the change in the demographics. And it's difficult to see the, the borderlines. You know, mine, when people ask me, what, what area do you cover? I usually say West Oso Carroll High School and Moody High School. And then now the London area. So it's very simple. It's very something for, easily for understand. But, you know, I'm, I'm obviously being in my district, I'm quite familiar with the demographics. However, as we're moving right here, the numbers are very small and it's very difficult for the public to be able to, to really see the impact of when we're moving precincts around. So I, I, I don't know that we take the time so that way the, the public understands how we're moving them around. I'm disappointed that, I don't want to say that. I, I wish we would have, along with these maps, the demographic changes. So we could see the voting age population versus the population of the area, you know, versus the entire population.
Yeah.
That's good.
And, and, and so I, I'd just kind of like to see that. You know, I, I'd like to ask questions, but, I mean, I want to ask, be able to ask questions one-on-one, I guess, as long as we're not going to make any changes, maybe just for clarity. So that way I could explain to my constituents. But however, I, I just think that the, there's a, there's a, a component of the, of the public that is very concerned, that, that wants to see it as, as transparent as possible.
Sure.
So, and, and then, so I, I think that's, that's, that's one thing. I, I don't know if, I'm, I'm, I just feel that we need to have more from this workshop right now.
Let's, let's do this since that's come up. Cameron, can you put the map back up and make the, the demographic data more, more prominent? Maybe take the map down a little bit?
Sure thing. I just did that a little bit. Is this good or do you want to?
Make it a little bigger.
Bigger. Are you, is this good like this? And then I can scroll to see.
No, that's good.
We've got total population right here in orange, then voting age in blue over here.
So looking at the, the, the numbers that are on the screen right now that will be printed out and delivered to the, the city today. District One is up to 64,887 people in total population. District Two is at 66,592. District Three is at 61,889. So it's actually technically the smallest district right now. District Four is 62,573. And District One is 61,977. That gives us a total deviation of 7.43%. Looking at the demographic data, District One is 67.73% Hispanic, 26.25% white. And the rest is African-American and other. District Two is at 71.4% total population Hispanic and 23% white or Anglo. District Three is 72.5% Hispanic and 18.29% white or Anglo. District Three is at 38.47% Hispanic population, which I think is almost identical to what it is under the current plan.
Mm-hmm.
And about 49.32% Anglo. And District Five is 52.47% total population Hispanic and about 34.75% total population Anglo. Down slightly from the, the current plan is 53.38%. So it's down about half a percent, six cents of a percent.
And now, and also, alluding to Councilman Pusley's point, you know, we, we have a tendency at, at times, and, and maybe this is just a legislative issue, not a redistricting issue, is, you know, Councilman Hernandez is always concerned that his district gets the least amount of dollars for streets. And, but, but I think the point is, is that in essence for what we're drawing, District One should get all that because they have the largest amount of real estate. So I, I don't know how that, if, if that gets taken into consideration somehow or another, if that's a legislative issue with us with regard to, because I, I know in, in the state process, obviously you have state, state reps that's cover, encompass large areas because it's a lot of rural land. So I, I, I don't know. You, you all of a sudden, you lose the consistency of that district or of what they represent. As Councilman Pusley said, that typically they represent the northwest area and the industrial area. So I, I don't know that that gets represented here one way or another or, you know, or I guess that's up to us to be able to give you.
Yeah, in terms of distribution of, of municipal funds, I mean, that's a budgeting question, which is purely legislative. And I was a city council member for 13 years, so I know exactly how that process goes.
In Austin?
I, in Cedar Park, the fastest growing suburb of Austin.
Okay.
Or used to be. I guess Landry's overtaken us now, but.
Yeah.
And there's, there's a million ways to do this, just so you all know. You know, there's a lot of blocks here in terms of election precincts. We can move any of those around. If people are unhappy that one is, you know, as far to the south as it is, we can back it up and take some population in another section to put into one. You know, that's the kind of feedback that we need.
Right. Let me, we've got a few lights on. Councilman Molina?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I, I'm going to be really flexible when it comes to the ideas and discussions that, that are happening that pertain to District Two. I, I know that a few of my colleagues have made comments about making District Two one of the larger districts in preparation for the growth that's happening in our city. And I'm fine with that. We can have those discussions. I, I do. I, I do, when, when it comes to District Two, I, I want to make sure that, at, at least for me, that I'm looking at this through a six-year lens, eight-year lens, ten-year lens, and, and make sure that, that we plan for that. One of the things that that I would like to see is, and, and I like Councilman Smith's idea of, although I, I'm not wanting to go out of the way to split voting precincts throughout the entire city, I, I think that one in 92 just makes sense because Airline is a natural boundary right there. So I'm, I'm, I'm open to that. I, in person, I would like to see 84, 109, and, and 89 remain in District Two. And I'm not sure what that does to the, the numbers and, and if that throws us out of that percentage, but is that something that we can take a look at?
Yeah, we can do it right now. First, let's do the, the split, that one election precinct. Cameron, can you go in and just take that little area that's kind of off by itself in 92, and I guess assign it to three, because that's, it's completely surrounded by three. It's actually two census blocks.
Here we go, just like that?
Yeah, and that didn't really change any of the numbers significantly. And then it's 104, 89, and 84, so that whole little trapezoid there.
Yeah, and then we also talked about the, the rest of that 92 area where, where it, Airline splits it.
Go back, zoom back in there. So that area there, where did you want that to go?
I can't mark on my screen, but where Airline splits 92.
Would you like to just move all that into four for now?
Yes.
Oh.
Yeah, all that into four.
Yeah, it's already in four, all right. You can see the odd shapes we get here.
There we go.
Okay, that still keeps everything in balance.
And then, uh-
Numbers are all substantially similar, and then that, that-
84, 109, and 89.
So put those into two.
Remain in District Two.
Yeah. What we're going to end up having to do is get more population into three.
So do that, and then this will leave precinct 90 by, uh, kind of like separate from the rest of three, so let me know how you want to adjust that.
That's a good point. Well, let's move these and see what happens. That takes us out of balance.
Well, not by much, you shift something else.
Three, uh, three needs to gain. Four is back to 64,000, so it's over by a little bit.
Well, you could put 71, which is currently in three, uh, keep it in three. Yeah, 71 and 95, keep them in three.
That gets us back into balance. The numbers look pretty good. It's just that, yeah, that little finger of 90.
Where's that at right now, in 90?
It's in three, but it's-
Can you put that in two?
It's really either two or, or four at that stage. So yeah, I should be able to go into two.
And that little that little one section of 92 there. That little sliver.
You're getting that one back.
Or put that in four.
No, it would be better to put it in two because it's surrounded by another block of two, unless there's a reason to assign it down.
I would think it'd be in four because it's surrounded by four on the other side, and 92 itself would be, is all four.
We can go back to that. It just depends on whether you, you want to focus there on the election precinct boundary or a more standard road, you know, block.
Yeah, 92 is already, because of Airline, it's already split between two and four, so.
Oh, that's right, yeah, we've already split it, so. Yeah, I mean, the numbers are still within the acceptable limits.
So, so that, that little section of 92 there, is that, that's in District Two now?
It's in-
Is that what we're talking about?
It's, right now it's in two, I can move it, uh, it's ready to move it to four right now if you'd like to.
All right, no, no, I, I just wanted some clarification because it's still highlighted.
Oh, and maybe just because he's clicked on it, yeah.
Okay.
So three is no longer, you know, it's still the smallest.
And four, and two is still the biggest.
Yeah, two is the biggest, which was the the concept that we're kind of working through. Go back to the, slide the, the scale over a little bit, the demographics, so I can see the and you could take some out of one to put into three if we wanted to change the numbers. I don't know, does council member Barada, do you, do you need to have more population?
Well, we're going to continue to grow in the London area.
Yeah.
If you could come in, I, I guess the, the airport, the area around the airport, I can't see that. If you can go then to where we pulled into District One.
Mm-hmm. And we can move up one block. Yeah, do the, do the 15 first because it's the southmost, so. There we go.
Doesn't do much. Oh, there you go.
Yeah, we're still within the balance. The numbers generally look similar to the current numbers in terms of the demographics of the districts. That makes three and five is the smallest, and then four, and two is the biggest, so. That achieves a lot of the goals I've heard stated today. Happy to look at other scenarios, or I, I worked with a city where one of the council members kept saying, well, I want to get rid of this group, and we kept saying, don't say that in public. He meant he just wanted to move them out of his district, but he kept saying, I want to get rid of them, and it's like, well.
Councilman Hernandez.
I think this would have been a lot easier if we had some of the numbers for these precincts ahead of time.
Yeah.
You could have gotten that, you know, some recommendations to you, similar to how I did with 17 and 126, because I actually went and counted each of the census blocks.
Right, there's a Okay.
I mean, you have the numbers, right? You could have provided them.
Yeah, we just provided them at block level inside of an election precinct, and we can, we can correct that.
Yeah, and, and the reason I say that, I think it would have been a little bit easier for us to, you know, recommend different precincts to move around if we knew exactly the numbers and how it would change the totals.
Yeah, but our, our stated direction was not to change things because one or more of you sent us a communication that said, change this. We're, we're supposed to develop an illustrative plan, which we've done.
Right. You're misunderstanding me. I'm saying you should have given, if we had the numbers, we could have made the recommendation here during the workshop.
Oh, sure, yeah, yeah.
A lot easier than try to, you know, let's move this here, move that there, and do trial and error.
Yeah, fair enough.
So I, I think that would have been easier. Maybe you could, we could provide that information on our website. That way the public can do something similar, right?
Yeah.
And have that information available. The, the other thing, and I, and I had to correct my, uh, my fellow councilmen on the resident, it was residential streets, not overall streets, residential streets, and District Five has a lot of residents, residential streets, so I want to make that clear. It's not about total area, it's about residential streets.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that, thank you very much.
So if we've gotten to a place that, you know, we're comfortable presenting this to the public and getting feedback, we, as, we can draw as many times as you feel the need to draw. And if we're in the community input sessions and there's, you know, 100 people showing up saying this is terrible, we'll probably get back to you sooner rather than the very end of the process.
About what time do you think, Kabi, that y'all will send something with the reflective changes?
Uh, it's basically up to Cameron.
Cameron?
How quickly, how quickly can you bring it up?
I should be able to get this done very, uh, do you have, I should be able to get this done, like, I don't know, it shouldn't take me too long, I should be able to get this done, like, probably early this afternoon at the latest.
Okay.
And Mayor Cameron is, Cameron is one of your staff members from Bigger Staff?
Yes, he's our GIS technician in our office.
It's not our Cameron, just want to make sure it's not our Cameron from our community.
Yeah, sorry, no.
Good point.
He's, he's the voice that we keep hearing, but is not here.
Right.
Oh, interesting.
Okay, so that's the Plan A revised that we'll be using for the community input sessions. I do have a slide, Kabi, are you? I have a timeline that we can just talk about with the council, just the-
Yeah, that's a fair part of this.
So if we can just show a slide really quickly, Cameron Gorman.
The other Cameron?
The other Cameron.
Councilman Pusley, I'm sorry.
I'll just have another question, okay?
Yeah, I didn't see his light.
I'm sorry, okay, go ahead.
So you're going to show, excuse me, these changes, excuse me. You'll make the changes in the map, have those to us this afternoon, the ones that have been suggested here.
Yes.
Will you also be able to get those? Because the list of the voting precincts that were impacted, what they were before, in other words, I'd like to see what District One was before and what we're changing it to, really all the districts. You know, what they were before, what they're changing to. Is that something you can get to us as well?
So you're, you're saying like a spreadsheet of the election precincts that make up each of those single-member districts in the current plan and in this plan?
Yeah, and, and what-
There, there should be a way to do that. We can work on that this afternoon.
Okay. Councilman, the current plan being Plan A, or like right now, today? The comparison is from what, the Plan A or the current maps, like before anything was done?
So Plan A and Plan A revised, is that?
What I would have liked to have seen is what are existing, what we look like today.
Right now, today, right, yeah, okay.
We have that list.
Compared to what we're going to change it to.
The Plan A revised, right?
Yeah.
Okay, just so we're clear, right? I don't know if it was Plan A to today's work.
Well, this, this was Plan A, but we've changed Plan A, so now we're, we're A prime, or whatever you want to call it.
Plan A revised.
I think we're going to call it Plan A revised.
Correct. So we have a list of precincts per district, we do, mm-hmm, yes, for the, for current, and we can update it with information today and send that out.
Oh, right, right. Yeah, let's call it Plan B, because that way we have Plan A, and then we go to Plan B, because it is a plan, the first one.
We may say, well, you know what, that was a crazy idea, let's go back to Plan A.
Right.
That's good.
And we could end up at Plan G.
Okay, Plan A, Plan B, got it.
Yeah.
Okay. Revised one, revised two.
Okay, Cameron, so call this next one Plan B.
Yes, Cameron.
And that's what we'll take to the public.
Yes.
Okay.
Plan B doesn't work, we've got a Plan C.
I, I worked with a, a city last time around in 2010 that I think we had 23 different iterations, and it got very complicated because they, they always had three or four going at once, and it was really hard to keep track, and we finally got it done by just having a big drawing session, and it worked out, but it can get really complicated if you have a million maps floating around.
Mr. Zanoni?
Mayor, I have one more statement.
And this, I just want to say, right out of the box, you did a pretty good job, so I, I
Thank you.
We're not that far off, and I, I thought, I thought you did a great job to start off with. I just would have liked to have had a little more information, that's all.
Sure, I understand.
Mr. Zanoni.
Mayor, I checked with Miles to see if tomorrow on the city council agenda, this could be discussed again, so you can see the maps and the, the council and, and the body can review them. So it's, there's nothing posted, however, he did say you could recess this meeting and reconvene it tomorrow.
Yeah, that's true.
And that'll allow you as a group to look at the maps one more time with some of the requested information before the six o'clock meeting. That's an option, just to, if you, as a group, wanted to review them one more time before the first meeting tomorrow night.
I, I'd prefer the public gets a good look at it before we start giving more of a final type.
No, no, we're not doing a final.
Yeah.
Oh, not at all, no.
We're not doing a final, he's just saying to review.
Review it one more time as a body before the public sees it tomorrow night at six.
Right.
If you wanted to.
Yeah, no, no, yeah, thank you for that option, and Councilman Barada.
Thank you, Mayor, and, you know, I want to echo Councilman Pusley's comments. I, you know, I, I, the first time I saw it, I said, okay, we're done.
No. Almost never.
I mean, that's, that, that candidly, those were my thoughts now, and, and I know, um, so, so I do appreciate that, and, you know, and obviously the public's concerned, and, you know, and, and for the sake of the group that keeps asking, you know, on the, on the independent review committee.
Sure.
You know, I, I firmly believe, I, I, when we, when we talked about, I'll give more information than you want. When we talked about changing our terms to four-year terms, I'm a firm believer in voter empowerment, two-year terms. If you don't like me, you can fire me. And so I'm not, I'm not-
I used to say that, too.
Yeah, and, and I'm not, so, and, and, you know, and I'm, and that's supportive, supportive of these independent committees, and the reason being is because they, they had, the, the comments were, it insulates the, the council, and my thing is that they, I'm, I'm elected, as you well know, for the purpose of representing my, my, my community, and therefore, if they're, they're either satisfied or not satisfied, rather than me pushing on somebody else. So that's my personal, but that being said, you know, once again, they've been, they've, they've, they've obviously been very vocal about this independent review committee, and Bigger Staff came up with a, a, you know, a document, so can you, can you explain why?
Sure. The firm's position has always been that it, you should not use independent review committees unless there's some absolutely pressing reason to do it. Uh, the vast majority of our clients do not use them. Our advice since the 2000, 2010, and now the 2020 redistricting has been to not use them. That was, in fact, Steve Biggerstaff's advice when he was actively practicing law. He retired in about '04 or '05. And I think the comments that have surfaced that were made by him was when he was trying to get the city of Austin to adopt a single-member district election system, uh, which had come up multiple times over the prior decades and failed every time. Um, and so it was more of a political activity on his part. He wasn't affiliated with the firm, it was a change, honestly, from the firm's philosophy. Um, and it's just, you know, one, one guy's opinion that was trying to get, and ultimately got the voters to approve a change of the charter to make Austin adopt single-member districts, so. Um, the firm's position as a firm has never deviated. I've worked there since 2002, and it's been the same consistently throughout.
All right, I appreciate that, thanks.
And for the reasons you just stated, you are, in fact, the elected representatives, and you, you know those communities best, and ultimately you have to make the decision under your charter and under law, so even if the committee, almost everybody that has a committee, the body, the elected body can then change what the committee comes up with because they're the ones that adopt it, so.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. And Kabi, I'd like to welcome you to work out of our office.
Oh, thank you.
I have a conference room that you can utilize, and if any council member wants to drop in or, you know, visit with you, they're welcome to do so as well. So, I have plenty of space.
You're going to be here or at the hotel, so. Thanks.
Okay, you're welcome. Uh, Councilman Lorma, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just, I need a clarification. Individuals came up here and said that we have a conflict of interest. Can someone explain that to me? Why they would say that the, the, the council has a conflict of interest if we vote on this, or, or do the process that we're doing?
That legal, the problem with the conflict of interest legal theory is twofold. First off, it's a conflict that you can't get rid of. The second is, I believe a majority of you have a, if a majority has a particular conflict based on a particular theory, then that's no longer a conflict because it's held by a majority of the council. Uh, so there, there's two problems with that theory of conflict. There may be others, but the main, the main reason is you, you really can't escape that obligation.
Okay, say that again, and just regular old fashioned talk.
I think you confused me.
What do people feel like is the conflict? That we would be doing what by creating these?
That's what my question is, why do they feel that from us?
I don't know how many people feel that, but one person stated it, and that the theory behind that is probably that you would be, you, you would be considering your own incumbency within that, within those districts. That's not a legal conflict for, for several reasons, the main being that if, if a person alleges a conflict that is common to a majority of the council, it's no longer a conflict.
Right. Right, okay. Councilman Pusley, is that a new light? Or is that your old light? Okay.
Okay.
So this may be completely out of right field, but would we want to adjourn this meeting until like two o'clock this afternoon and come back? Is that possible, Miles?
Yeah, the, you can, you have the power to recess the meeting to whatever time you wish.
Whatever you want to call it, recess, yeah, okay, just throwing that out there.
Okay, I think, you know, unless, unless we have any other council members who, again, you're welcome. Kabi, so you're, will you be there?
Sure.
You'll be in our office, though?
I can be here, yes.
That'd be great, and that way it's convenient, and then I think that we would welcome anyone to come visit, unless there's council members that would prefer to, you know, come back. Michael, reading your eyes. No. Oh, very good. Okay, all right, well, let's do that, as long as you're open to that, then we welcome, you know, any visits for you there.
Yeah, I'll be here.
Sure, okay. Rebecca?
I did have a slide to review the timeline. If you can pull that up, okay. So this is the timeline that we discussed on the eighth, so we have conducted the initial assessment, the resolution adopting the criteria, we're having the workshop today, and the community input sessions are scheduled to begin February twenty-second through March the eighth, so tomorrow would be the first general session. And we had talked about, Councilmember Barata had suggested having a session where we wrap up the community input or where we assess it. So the thought was to do that on the eighth. Now, the last session is scheduled from six to seven, but the session, the wrap-up could start earlier, it just kind of depend, basically, the session is until seven or until all people who have registered to speak have spoken. So it could end earlier depending on how many people actually come out for that session. So we'd have the input at that point, so as Mr. Caputo was saying, if, as we're going through the process, there's a lot of input, a lot of people who are requesting changes, the council could meet, have a special council meeting, or, you know, on March the twenty-second, we could present another map, so that part is dynamic, it just depends on the type of public input we receive and how quickly the council wants to put that into place, so just wanted to show that to you again.
Okay. Thank you, Rebecca. All right, well, I think at this point, we will go ahead and adjourn the meeting, and we look forward
Recess.
I mean, reset, no, are we recessing?
Are we recessing?
Well, do you recess, or? How are you planning on, are we going to post, or how are you planning on that, Rebecca?
Well, I guess the suggestion is to, well, I thought we were going to do individual conferences, if, does the council want to recess the meeting? And come back at two to show the revised maps, because it's, the map is, is just what Mr. Caputo has, the Plan B? Oh, you want to do that, recess until tomorrow?
Oh, okay, so we need to recess, or?
Right, yeah, I would re, everybody's going to be here at eleven-thirty tomorrow, there's no schedule conflict, there probably is at two today.
Right.
But so at any point during the city council meeting tomorrow, you could reconvene this meeting to look at the maps as a body, as a group, before the six o'clock meeting at night. And you don't have to
We would need to recess versus adjourn.
So it's just to look at the maps, but the same Plan B that we're talking about is what's going to go to the community input session, so you just want to get together to look at the maps that he's just We just, which we're looking at right now, but we want to, we want to come back and look at it again, right?
Right.
In paper format.
Right, he'll give us the actual map, and we can go over that. Along with the demographics, yeah.
Okay, so print out the tables.
That's what's going to be shown in the evening.
Okay, yeah, it's just that to have the maps ready, we just need that to happen pretty early, right, well, there's not going to be any changes to the maps, the Plan B revised would remain the same.
Right.
Right.
You just want to see them in a group, right?
Right.
Because
Yeah, we're recessing, right.
We don't have a TURS meeting or anything tomorrow.
No, we, like, we don't.
No, it was canceled.
Earlier or during the meeting?
I would just do it during the meeting.
Well, I think it'd be earlier because we, I mean, we have that workshop at the end of the, at the end of council.
Right.
You know, they're, you know, I always think our council meetings are going to be short, and they always end up long, so.
If you say it out loud, it happens.
I know, that's true.
Whatever, I mean, but it doesn't have to be that long, we only need like thirty minutes, so if we come at eleven, I think we'd be fine.
Councilman Molina.
Thank you, Mayor. Do we, do we really need to review again? Once these, once this Plan B map is drawn, it's going to be emailed to us along with this census data. We can take time
To look at it.
On our own to review it ourselves. We're going to have another meeting again about this, so if, I'm fine if you guys want to have a meeting, but I really don't think it's necessary.
Yeah, that was the plan, was to email it as soon as we're done to the full council with the tables, so you could look at it as Mr. Molina state.
Or we can do thirty minutes, you said beforehand, and
Do we need to last recess?
Well, you'd recess. I'm going to go ahead and recess, and then let's, I don't think it'll hurt anything, you'll be here today, that door's still open, and, okay, so then we're going to go ahead and recess the meeting, do I have to state a time?
Recess until eleven, I guess, was what was, what was desired?
That's, yeah.
Yeah.
Did you, is eleven good?
We can do eleven o'clock.
It doesn't matter to me, whatever time y'all want.
Okay.
Why don't we, suggestion, recess till after open forum tomorrow, we could just discuss it right after open forum.
After public comment?
I mean, public comment. Whatever we call it here.
During the meeting, as opposed to before.
Yeah.
During the meeting.
Well, have a bunch of people here, they can listen.
We can, I don't have a problem doing it during either, which is what you're, I think if we're going to do it, it's more for the public, let's, okay, so we'll recess for, after public comment tomorrow.
Point of order.
During the, during the meeting.
Would it be confusing to the audience if you, you know, recessed one meeting to start up another meeting that we didn't talk about? I think it would just make a clear definition between the two meetings would be a better situation.
I mean, we do it, we do it for other
No, I mean, we do it, but
Right, but they won't be here.
But they're actually in the agenda when we do those. This would be, this would not be in the agenda. I understand we can legally do it.
Right, but
It's just, it would be confusing to the audience or the people that are here, and I don't think, I mean, but just to be safe, you could say eleven if we decide to do, I mean, if you want to do it in the meeting, you can, but it would be, I think it would just be confusing for the, for the public.
Well, I mean, not if it's explained. We're going to take thirty minutes. Let's just do it after public.
So we're going to take a break after a public comment and talk about these maps. Talk about the map again, review the map with the table, and then go, and then go back to the regular council meeting, reconvene the regular council meeting.
Right.
Just trying to be clear, yeah, so.
Yes. Yes, sir. Mr. Entor.
Don't mean to get off topic, but if we are presenting this live, our live feed is frozen right now.
Thank you. Okay, okay, so is that okay to do? Yes, right.
Normally, if you're going to recess, you would have a time certain that's shown on the minutes for reconvening.
So what do you think we should tomorrow?
It's up to y'all, I'm listening to what you want to do.
I support eleven-thirty, regular meeting.
I know, but we'd have to do a time within that. So, which is fine, it's the same difference as what you're saying, we have to schedule a time, so public comment has to be at noon. Eleven-thirty, well, no, it's got to be after, so let's just say, let's just say one o'clock.
Yeah, one o'clock.
To be completely safe, one o'clock.
So one o'clock, recess to one o'clock, very good.
Okay, so I am recessing to one o'clock.
Recessing the special meeting, yes, ma'am, to one o'clock, that's my understanding.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, that's right.
So I'm recessing this meeting until one PM tomorrow afternoon, Tuesday, thank you.